Got it, but Al's on, it's Lauren that isn't on yet.
Yes, I'm on, hi.
Lauren, just join us.
You are on, okay.
Hi.
Brenda, how are you?
So everyone, and I know Sal is in Italy. And you know, he didn't want to join our meeting from Italy, you know, what the hell's that? Um, okay, so, uh, good morning, everyone. So, so let me call this to order, the first, the meeting order, the first item on the agenda is just approval of the minutes from April fourteenth. Is, is there a motion?
It's removed.
It's not April, it's, it's actually, yeah, April fourteenth, I'm sorry. There's a motion, is there a second?
I have, I have Al down as the motion, Lauren, do you want a second?
Is there any discussion, changes? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, so, so the purpose of the meeting, and I want to thank, I know we have folks from both the union and from the university here today, which I appreciate. And the purpose of our meeting is to review and discuss, I know John and the staff have done a lot of work to, to bring us to this point, and I think the place to start is, John, for you to report out what the staff's find, what you found, and whether you, from that, have any recommendations to the committee or more questions. And I know we're, we're, we're going to give, I want to, I want to, this is a committee meeting, and so I, rather than just having the union or the university be able to comment at the end of the meeting, I, I think we'll, we'll play it by ear, but I assume there, there may be questions that we have or that they have, or, or, or comments that I would suggest that we just allow them to do those along the way as it makes sense, because that, that'll, that'll be the clearest. So, John, if that makes sense to everyone, John, why don't you start?
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense, and I, you know, what I tried to do, I talked to Larry yesterday quickly about how we kind of wanted to run the meeting today, and he had asked that I just kind of put together a, a quick outline of, you know, what's in the documents and how everything has worked. So I'm just going to kind of report everything in the business case and the CBA. I'm, I'm, I literally took words from the business case or the CBA and just put them into some slides, and I tried to put it together in a way that kind of outlines how we got to where we are. So as, as I go through things, I think that if there's any questions, or if, you know, obviously if the subcommittee members have anything that, a question, please interrupt me and stop, and then we'll get some clarification, because again, all I did was just take the words out of the business case itself and try to put it into a, an outline of how we got here. So let me go through things really quick, and this will be brief, it's not, I'm not going to read word for word for that business case, it's quite extensive, right? But I did, since this is such a complex case, I thought it was important for us to kind of go through some background. And as there's questions on the background, let's just get those answered now, and if we can't answer them now, we'll take them as, you know, an action item, and I'll, I'll make sure I follow up with either party on, on what we need to do. Just a reminder, we have a hard stop at eleven thirty, I just wanted to bring that up, because I know Larry has to get out of here at eleven thirty, so.
By the way, that, that, that has changed, so I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind shooting for eleven thirty, but, but my day is.
I, I can't be on past then, just FYI, I don't know if you're going to need me, but I can't, I don't have that much time available.
Got it.
I also have a hard stop at eleven thirty.
Sounds good, okay, perfect.
I'm off the hook, we can blame it on you guys, go ahead.
Well.
Great.
Kidding. Go ahead, John.
Okay, so, um, quickly, I'm just going to read again out of the business case. UConn in the state of Connecticut had utilized contractors to provide janitorial services at state facilities for decades, including the university stores campus, right, because that, that's where this complaint originated, from the stores campus. So university in-house janitorial staff have been utilized for daily cleaning service of the student recreation center and certain university athletic facilities for a period of time prior to July twenty twenty-two. Again, I'm, I'm taking the words directly out of the business case, so UConn, if, if I say something incorrectly, or if I misspoke or anything, please interrupt me and tell me, you know, that, that, we'll, we'll get the record right, is what I wanted to do. Next, the current C and W agreement, C and W is the contractor that they're using for the janitorial services. It had an initial term from July one twenty twenty to July, to June thirtieth twenty twenty-five with options to extend. So there was an existing contract with the university and C and W for janitorial services. And beginning in April twenty twenty-two, the university evaluated the cost of utilizing C and W at certain athletic facilities, and between July and October twenty twenty-two, the university transitioned in-house janitorial staff from servicing certain athletic facilities on the stores campus to residential buildings on the stores campus, and that's where the staff is currently still located. So the janitorial services that we're talking about today, they're not, you know, they're not really just one thing, they're, they're limited, they're not limited to just these things that are listed here, restroom cleaning and all the other things, I think it's anything really just to kind of support those athletic facilities, and again, I'm not positive on the scope of work, but I think this kind of summarizes what they do, right, they do office servicing, they do trash removal, emergency response for like a flood or project cleaning work, whatever it might be, those are the janitorial services that we're talking about, and these are the ones on the athletic facilities, and I believe the student recreation center at the stores campus. So in the business case, it said the goal was to use this contract, and it's to employ the appropriate number of staff to perform the task necessary to clean the campus. The most effective way to do so, they say, is through the overall savings plan proposed. The scope of the work evaluated under this business case includes the use of those contracted janitorial services for both the student recreation center and certain athletic facilities. So before I go on, I, I hope this kind of summarized the background for everybody. And again, I tried to pull the words directly from the business case, so I wasn't putting any words in UConn's mouth. Is, is everybody in agreement that this is kind of good, or, and are there any questions out there before we kind of move on?
Keep going.
Okay, all right, so then, as part of the privatization process, as outlined in statute four E sixteen, there's really two major steps, right, to deliver a business case, which is your rationale, and it's a word document. That's where most of this language came from, and then there's also the cost benefit analysis, and the cost benefit analysis is an Excel worksheet, and that Excel worksheet has numerous sheets, and it's really meant to try to capture all of the costs for doing a service in-house, and then comparing those costs to contracting for those services. And while we would wish that this sheet worked well for all privatizations, it doesn't work well all the time, right? But it's a pretty good way for us to kind of have a, a standard way of documenting decision-making going forward. So I just kind of wanted to give an overview of what the business, what the the cost benefit analysis looked like after UConn completed it. So if you look on sheet D one-on-one, not sure on the sheet, there's so many sheets in there, sometimes I forget which one, but there is a summary page. And this summary page really kind of puts all those numbers together and lets you kind of compare apples to apples based on the way that you constructed the, the cost for both in-house services and, you know, outsourcing. So quickly, I just kind of wanted to review what the, what the CBA shows, and I've highlighted a couple of sections here that I think are, are the important numbers that we need to talk about. So the total cost of in-house service delivery, including all direct costs, it's the first line, the, and the first one highlighted in yellow, it's two point five seven two million, right, we'll, we'll say somewhere around there is, is the cost with indirect costs.
And, and what do we mean by indirect costs?
So indirect costs really include a lot of different things, some of those are the efforts that required from university employees to support these efforts. So kind of if you had a project manager that is a state employee, their time and material, then you, then you have things like material costs, like supplies, and, and you have profit, and you have all those other things that are, that are really the indirect cost, not the, not the hard costs that are outlined on the contract, it's all the other costs that go into associated with trying to maintain this effort, we'll call it.
Okay.
So the third line, the total cost of contracting out, including indirect costs. So the first thing we looked at was what it would cost for in-house, right, based on the model results. This, the, the third line is what it costs for them to outsource, and that came in at one point eight eight nine. So line five is just a, is just a quick calculation, you take that two point five million it would have cost to do it in-house, if you outsource it, it would cost one point eight eight nine million, and then the savings, as identified in the sheet, are six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. And that includes the indirect costs. I, I did some, I did some field of the research on this yesterday, it is, it's a really complex model. I know I had a couple of questions from some of the, the subcommittee members. It, it seems like the sheet just keeps getting more complex and more complex, but this summary is really the best way to look at the results, and I think, I, I just tried to reiterate what, what that giant spreadsheet says, so everybody's kind of aware of what numbers we're talking about. So in the business case, in the written document and the word document, you'll see that UConn states that we're going to save twenty-five percent or six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, and twenty-five percent is, you know, of, of that cost, right? So again, this is a summary, there's a lot that goes into this, there's, there's a lot of different calculations that UConn had to fill out and some assumptions they had to make. But this, this is really the nuts and bolts of what we're talking about, and when they're saying they're privatizing this, this is, this is really the savings as a result of, of, of this effort, of, of the CBA, this is what it's telling you that it's going to save. I, I tried to think of this as an auditor, right, so if I was looking at this, and I was trying to audit this to see if I could figure out how they made up the costs, right? And I'm not saying made up as in like, they're just, you know, making up a number, they're, they're not doing that at all. The best way to usually do this, to audit something, is to go back through and like, look for documentation, we call it traces a lot of time in auditing. You want the numbers in the worksheet to trace to a document, show that you can verify the cost, and that, that's kind of what we did here. And I, I tried to make it as a price buildup, so when, initially, when I first, when we first received this on the twenty-eighth, I think it was July twenty-eighth we received this. I had a, I had a couple of quick questions, right, like I mentioned, it was, it's, it's really a confusing worksheet, because the numbers are all over the place, but what UConn was able to do was help me understand where they're getting all these numbers to do their price buildup, right? How did they come up with the one point six three million dollars? And what they were able to do is to trace those values that I've outlined in this, in this quick summary to pages in the contract itself, so on the right-hand side, one of the documents we received from UConn was the contract between C and W and UConn. And what they were able to do was show that, for example, service workers for the athletics facility, on page thirty-eight, you'll see that the contract states that it would cost nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand two hundred and nine dollars for those workers per the contract. So when you start to tally all of these together, the service workers, the day porters, the weekend staff for both the athletic facilities and the rec center, it comes up to about one point six three million dollars. That is, that is the direct contract costs, right? And then there's other things that go on top of that as part of the model, because you're trying to, remember on my last slide, I showed you that it would cost one point eight eight nine, right, for them to contract it out? They already have the contract cost, and then we have the, all those other things that Larry just asked about, what's the other things that go into it to get you to the one point eight eight nine? And a lot of that's just based on some, some other numbers that they put into the spreadsheet, it's overhead, supplies, profit, and other indirect costs. And that brings us to the one eight eight nine oh three, so what I can say is at least, what, what I can say is I can verify the numbers as part of the price buildup, which is, which is a good thing, right? A lot of the times we, we tried to go in and, and take a swag at this during, during the process, but luckily UConn has the contract already, and we're able to pull the cost out of the contract and see where it traces into the CBA. And, and that's important, and that, that, that kind of helps us understand how, how they went through this, and, you know, it, it helps us verify that those numbers are, are repeatable, or whatever you might want to call it. So I want to take a break, does anybody have any questions? I know, I know I've gone through a lot, and I've gone through kind of the summary, and I've gone through the price buildup. I didn't really get into the contract, because the contract, I want to say, is like another fifty pages for this amendment or whatever it is, but does anybody have any questions on either, you know, the CBA or the price buildup, or how it worked, or what we did?
I guess one, I have one question, oh, Al, you have a question?
Yes. Go ahead. Who put the numbers together?
I'll have to let UConn answer that one now.
They come from the employer.
Stephanie Remazi, Ramos.
Remozzi.
Remozzi. Have to know the person, is it, was it, who, who, who just, who, who did the, this spreadsheet? I mean, is it, is this the contractor that did this spreadsheet?
No, the university prepared the CBA.
Stephanie Remozzi, who works for our facilities operations office, is here with us today, and she prepared the spreadsheets.
Our, our being who?
The UConn's, sorry.
UConn.
UConn, okay, so you, UConn, employee of UConn did this, these sheets?
Yes.
Yes, UConn put this together, yes.
All right.
Well, that's what they're required to do, right?
Yes.
Correct, it can't be done by the contractor, it should be done by the, by the agency that's outsourcing it.
Have you analyzed, have you analyzed why there is this big difference?
Al, I'll, I'll get into a little of that on the next slide. I, I don't want to answer for UConn why there's a difference between that and this, but that's not really something that I did as part of my analysis. The only thing that I, I looked at was like, if, if we made some adjustments for those ongoing rate negotiations, but I don't have any information, or at least the staff doesn't have any information on why one cost is higher than the other cost, that, that's something that I think UConn would have to answer.
Well, let's hold that for the moment.
Okay.
But, but Al, hold it, because we may, we may want to ask that later on.
Yeah, come on, I will.
Okay, John, keep going.
I didn't care.
Hold on, I, I have a question.
Yep, Lauren.
I, forgive me if it was already said, and maybe I just missed it, but just to be sure, this is an apples-to-apples comparison of all the work, there's no work that the contractors are saying that they won't perform or that they'll perform differently, is there still work in here that the the current janitor employees would be picking up?
No, it, it's apples-to-apples, and just to clarify again, it's, the form that we completed was the form that's been published by OPM, so we followed that form, and, and John, I appreciate the background, I know you're going to get into it, and, you know, as a matter of course, you know, while we maintain that, that shift, it necessarily triggered the four E sixteen requirements, I think, you know, as a show of good faith, we put together all the documents that the boards requested, including the CBA. And, and I think it certainly reflects, not only our willingness to work collaboratively with the board, but also that we can achieve significant savings through the use of the contractor.
Kara, I see you had your hand up.
Uh, yes, and I don't know, John, if you're getting to this, but we do have some questions as it pertains to the fringe rate portion of these calculations, and I don't want to step on your toes if you're going into any of that, but we are still concerned that the fringe rate is not the accurate rate being utilized for these calculations.
I think we're going to get to that, right?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to get, I'm going to get into fringe a little bit, and we'll talk about that. And I'll try to get some background onto that, so if we don't have any other questions, that's the next thing I'm going to get into, so let, let's, let's jump to that, why don't we do that?
Yeah, John, I would just like to say that we utilize the forms that were provided to us by the state contract.
Yeah, and that, that's where I was going to start, right, and I, I know a lot of people that have sat on the board in the last, oh, it feels like four or five meetings, we've talked a lot about rates, and we've talked a lot about working with the comptroller and OPM to try to get some of those corrections, remember, I want to say it was in April or May, we had identified that the rates that were being used in some of these spreadsheets include, included costs that were not normal. And when I say not normal, not normal to what four E sixteen says as, as the normal cost, right? We can't include things that are unfunded liabilities, we can't include things that are for retirees, it's really the cost of having an active employee, and we've been working really hard with both OPM and the comptroller to try to get those numbers right. The reason that this sheet hasn't been updated is because we just published that new budget in July, and with that, there's some slight adjustments that had to happen again, after we did some re, new calculations because of the active, active employee healthcare costs. So to reiterate what Karen said, they did, UConn didn't do anything wrong by using the worksheet that I provided to them. They, they used the rates that were in there, they're pre-populated, it, it's not their, their fault that they haven't had a chance to see the update to the rates that, we'll say we've agreed to with OPM and the comptroller. Now, those rates that are with OPM and the comptroller, those are meant to be an established rate across the board for all agencies in, in the state government. Now, with that said, I understand that each organization has a little bit different costs. The problem is, we as a, as a group, don't have the bandwidth to calculate separate rates for each agency and organization in the state of Connecticut. So what we've done is we've worked with the comptroller and OPM, and we've tried to come to an agreement on a set of rates that we could apply to this privatization process across the board. So in my next slide, I, I did some work on that, and again, this is not UConn's fault, because they didn't, they didn't have the information to be able to do it. But when I, when I go back through it, I, I use the exact sheet that Karen and her team had provided to us. And then all I did was I made the changes to the rates where I think they fall right now per the latest comptroller OPM guidance, and I can, after this meeting, I can share
And share.
A slide that has that information, I'm getting some feedback here, I apologize. But those adjustments really are to take out those non-normal costs. I know that the, the worksheet that was provided to Karen and her team didn't have the updated rates in it, and that, again, isn't their fault. We, we're going to, we talked with OPM again this morning, Kevin and, and team are supposed to refresh this worksheet and, and get it back out there, but unfortunately, it just hasn't been done yet, so we had to do this kind of offline. Just to summarize, right, I, I've, I've made this kind of a table again. Those, those numbers that are in the UConn column are the same ones that I've shown you in the last couple of slides, right, that two point five seven million total in call, total in-house, the cost to outsource is one point eight eight, net savings was, was, whatever, six hundred and eighty-three thousand. And as UConn had stated, that's twenty-six percent net savings. When we go in and make the adjustments for the, these rate, I'll call them changes, because they are changes from what's in the, the sheet already, it, it does change things, it, it brings down the total in-house cost to about two point three seven two million, cost to outsource about one point eight eight million, it's, it's still kind of the same there, but the net savings have gone down a little bit, about, about four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. But that's, that's still twenty percent, that's still twenty percent. And that twenty percent is important, because if you look at the four E sixteen statute, it says that there's some different administrative things that the board has to do if they're above or below a ten percent threshold. But with these rate changes, we didn't get below or above the threshold, so I think, I think we're still kind of where we are, which is twenty percent.
Okay, questions?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, me, I just have, can I just quick?
Yeah.
Right, so that, that SCSB lit thing is what you're saying are the latest rates that are in discussion with the OPM comptroller, okay, got it.
Okay.
It still shows savings, okay.
Still shows that about twenty percent savings, right, and, and again, this is just based on the model and based on the inputs that are in there. I didn't manipulate any other part of the model, except that I changed the fringe rate, which is really just a single number in, in the worksheet itself, and I came up with these results. If there's any questions on how I did that, I'd be glad to show everybody how it is, but I just didn't want to burden this meeting with it, I think it's, you're going to have to take my word for it, but I promise you I can prove it, right?
Kara has her a hand up, Kara, go ahead.
John, if after the meeting, so this doesn't have to be done now, if you could send me the calculations, so I could see the new fringe rate, because these have changed, you know, several times over this course of this year, so I'd like to see that calculation.
Yeah, I can definitely do that.
Are there any other questions from either the union or UConn or from committee members?
Me. I have a, I, I have a.
Go ahead, Al.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have a question.
Yeah.
I, I'd feel better if Mr. Bertolino could take a look at.
Oh gee, Al, you're, you're.
He just dropped off, I think, did, oh, did we lose Al?
I don't know what's going.
Oh, no, I, we can hear you now. Oh, oh, I think we lost him.
Yeah, he's trying to come back in, and we'll, we'll admit him and see maybe if his connection will be there.
I can hear you.
Okay, well, we can, we can hear you too.
Okay, so that's, go ahead.
Uh, you, your, your point, you'd love, you wanted Al Bertolino to take a look at it too?
Yes.
All right, well, let, let's, let's think about that, that it's obviously, under, under the.
I also have some other questions.
Oh, go, go ahead with your other questions, go ahead.
Well, why, when you went over everything, Donna, so then did you, what do you think the reason is for the big, big difference between going outside and doing it in-house?
Al, I, I just want to be really honest, all I did was look at the numbers. I, I can't really make that assumption, I think that's something that either UConn, I think UConn would have to comment on that, but again, I, I just looked for completeness of the model in the business case, I didn't do any in-depth analysis on like, what it costs for, you know, this, this other group to do the work as compared to state employees, that, that's, that's not something I took a look at.
Let's, let's take one item, okay?
Okay.
What are the salary, I'm getting a feedback online, so, what, what, what are the, the salary paid to an individual in either case?
Yeah, I mean, look, look, Al, Al, I, 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 I mean, we could ask UConn, and we could ask the union, but my, my operating assumption is that the hourly rate that, that the contractor has is significantly less than the hourly rate of, of the, of the state employees, I mean, I, I don't, I mean, I, I think that's, that's not, I mean, in this job classification, my guess is that the state rates are higher than the average, even if it's a unionized private sector rate. Um, I don't know, UConn, is that what's going on for a lot of this cost?
Is, is that true?
I, I, I'm, I'm asking UConn now, or the union for that matter, I assume that the, that, that the state
Sir.
state workers make more per hour than the contracted workers did.
This is Karen Buffkin for the university, generally, yes, the hourly rate is one of those factors where, which results in lower costs.
Are, are there other significant factors on the, Karen, that go into that? That, you know, that, that, the labor cost?
I don't know, I don't know that we've done an in-depth analysis of that.
Okay.
Larry?
Yes.
Larry, if I may, I, I don't think, I think what Al is driving at is there's a six percent difference between the initial pass John did, and then when he adjusted it based on these new rates. John could, I think, looking at it from the rate side, John, could you speak to what changed in the rates that created a six percent difference? What, what factor was significantly changed?
Yeah, so, so mostly it was those non-normal costs, Lauren, which was the cost for retiree health benefits, and it was the retiree unfunded pensions. So those are originally in that sheet, and they should not be, they're not normalized costs, and they have to be removed, and that's why we had to go in and take those out. We have, I have confirmation for both comptroller and OPM that those, those, we all agree that those are non-normal costs, and they have to be taken out from the worksheet. They just haven't, the worksheet just hasn't been updated, and that's why we had to go back in and do it manually.
Kara, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to let Al know, the current salary for the, the basic custodians in our bargaining unit, which is salary grade nine, our lowest salary grade begins at twenty dollars and fifty-four cents an hour, or forty thousand two oh seven yearly, and they max out after ten steps or ten years of step increases at twenty-five sixty-seven per hour, or fifty thousand two forty-three annually. So these are the lowest-paid employees currently in our bargaining unit, and not, and very comparable to a lot of municipal sector custodians at this point, and sometimes lower, so just to give you a frame of reference, although I've. So just to give you a frame of reference, although I expect they are a higher rate than the CNW contract. But that is a 32BJ and other SEIU local contract. So I don't have their current rates, but we will get a copy of that contract for submission to, uh, to the group.
Thank you, Kara, that's helpful.
Mary, I have another question.
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah.
No, no, don't, sorry.
So, the, the contractor costs that were calculated in, did that include some of the same burdens that go into our state employee costs? Like healthcare, uh, retirement pensions, anything, or I mean, I'm sure they're not getting pension, 401 contributions. Anything like that, is that reflected in these models, um, as accurately as it is for the state employee side?
Good question. So I guess that's a question to, I guess that's a question to Yukon. So whatever the fringe package is that CNW has. Uh, for, for health and, 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 and retirement, is that included in the cost?
Yes, their fringe rate is included in the cost of the contract.
Okay, I guess another question which I have is, is. Uh, is, is it an apples-to-apples comparison in terms of the number of people to clean? And take care of the square footage?
Yes, it's an apples-to-apples and that all information has been provided to the board in terms of the note bodies that it represents.
Okay. So, any other questions at this stage?
Al, I saw your hand back up again, did you have another question? Al, you might be on, on mute if you're trying to talk, um. It looks like.
Yeah, Al is on mute.
Yeah, it looks like you were in here twice, I'm not sure how that happened, but, um. The one that I see, you're on mute.
All right.
I can follow up separately with Alan, see if he had any other questions, I, I'll try to capture those.
Let's keep going.
I consider that now.
I, I don't know what.
There we go, Al, you're, you're back now, go ahead.
I am?
Yeah, we can hear you now, did you have?
Yeah, except that, there's an echo going through that, everything you say.
Yeah, that's good, I think that's because you actually have two lines open, but, but we're not hearing that echo.
Okay.
Did you have any question?
No, I just, well, I'm just trying to get apples to apples and I, I agree with you that, uh. It's probably in the wages that are being paid.
Yeah.
Uh, and you know, it, it, if it's not the numbers, it must be the price per number.
Yeah, they may have a leaner indirect cost too, but, but it sounds like it's mostly in the. In the wages and the, and the fringe, their fringe, their fringe package, even with the adjustment that's been made, may be. Significantly less than what the state fringe package is, I don't know, do, do we know that? Uh, Yukon, do you know that i- is, is the fringe of the contractor, even after the adjustment, is it less than the state fringe package? Do we know?
We, the fringe rate is included in the price that we're provided by the contractor, we don't examine their benefits.
Yeah, but I mean, the total price of their fringe, fringes, is there, is that less than the? To- total cost of the adjusted fringe rate for state employees?
It's one consolidated amount, it's not broken apart, so we don't have any way of providing that.
Oh, it's not a, but is, as a fringe package, is it separated out that way or not?
No, it's wages and fringe.
Together. I, I got you, I got you, I understand now. Okay, John, let's keep going.
Okay, um, you know, this really kind of wraps things up, but I can kind of, I, I did put together a slide on, you know, when I changed those rates, what they look like. I could, I can share that with anyone that's interested in what the, the rate impact changes were, but. The, the only last thing I really want to say is, when you look at 4E16, there is kind of a timeline on this, right? The board received this on the 28th of July, they have 60 days to make a decision. Um, and you as the subcommittee. Will be making the recommendation for a full board vote, right? Uh, but there is an optional 30-day extension and I want everyone to kind of, uh, think about that now. I know that we have a lot of transition with Larry leaving and we have an, our next meeting just two days from now. Um, so unless we want to get back together with another special meeting. We're gonna have to consider the extension and the way that I interpret 4E16, I think it says. Directly in there that the subcommittee can vote for that extension, I don't think it has to go to the full board. So that might be something that we want to consider if. Again, I, I'm just trying to do the timeline here, I, I, I'm not sure what's gonna happen, we're gonna try to do anything in two days, but, um, just a reminder.
So let, let me, let me, um. If it makes sense to the committee, uh, shares what some of my thinking is based upon John's work. And I really appreciate. Um, the, uh, the, all the work that John's done, that Yukon's done and that the union's done as well. Uh, uh. And, and, and some, some, I recognize that, that the university at this stage. Uh, is, is participating and, and, and without prejudice to their. Whether they, they feel that we're beyond the scope of our authority. Um, I, I get that and I appreciate that you're doing that. I, I want to say, uh, in part because I'm leaving soon. What, what I, what I, what I think, um, the board's authority is and, 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 and. And what, what I think, um. Our recommendation to the, to the, uh. Full board should be, uh, but I see Kara's got her hand up, so maybe I should let her go first.
Well, I, I did, I did have a few comments I wanted to make, uh, Larry, and one of them does involve the extension and the, the, the finalization of this matter. Um, the local would like an opportunity to submit a written response to everything we've heard today as well as what was supplied. Um, because we had only just received it a few weeks ago after this been going on for a year. So I would just like to note that and on, you know, on behalf of the local. I also just want to note this, it, you know, when we're looking at a, maybe a possible 400,000 plus. Uh, savings, that seems like a lot and yes, it comes out to 20%. But we are talking about the lowest paid state employees at a large public institution. Uh, of a very diverse population of employees that are being slowly edged out. Many of them work two jobs already at the wages we're talking about. Many times for the same contractor that we're talking about. Many of them work for the contractor as well as the state to make ends meet. So when we're looking at this as a public policy issue as well as just a nuts and bolts financial issue. I just asked the board to take that into consideration when we're looking at everything we have before us. $482,000 is not a large amount when we look at the overall operating budget of a public institution that could be a large employer. For this type of employee, um, and this type of opportunity. Um, and, um, the other thing I just want to note in the business case, um, you know, we, uh, John did a good job going over what Yukon submitted. I just wanted to highlight one thing I noted here. In that the current staffing levels have reached the point where the standards need to be maintained, they can't do a current staffing. That's because Yukon has chosen to stop hiring NP2 bargaining unit employees. And slowly by, uh, attrition are edging them out. So yes, they did not lay off any of our members, but they are slowly edging them out in favor of contracted services. For this type of population and that is troubling to us. So I just wanted to be on the record of that and we will submit a written response as well to the numbers once I take another look at them that John gives us. Um, so thank you for the opportunity to state that.
Thank you, uh, Kara, and, and, um. Uh, I, 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 are, are, I mean, my inclination as the chair of the committee. Um, would be that, that, uh. If in fact the union wants an opportunity to do a written response, we should, we should certainly allow. The time for that to happen and if that, that means extent and extension, um. You know, I would be, I would be, we, the, the committee will have to vote on that, but I'd be in favor of, of providing that extension. Um, but I, I, I also want to share.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like the opportunity to respond.
Yes.
Before you do.
Um, okay.
And I, I appreciate your comments about the fact that the university is here, you know, um. Given our objections to the, to the decision that was made. Um, and that we're here without prejudice. I'd like to note that no matter which form we've submitted. No matter which spreadsheet we've utilized, no matter which change in the formula has been applied. The university has continued to save money with this contract. It is, by the most recent numbers that have been agreed to by OPM and the board and the comptroller's office and the board. The university is saving slightly more than 20% with this contract for an area, for the areas that are specified. While I certainly understand the position of the union with regard to their members. The role of the board is to determine whether or not the privatization of this contract meets the standards of 4E16. In terms of the cost savings and that the business decision lies with the university. When those cost savings are realized. The, 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 none of these employees were laid off. Um, and I'd also like to know, you know, without weighing in on whether or not an extension for the board's work is appropriate. This was submitted to the union at this, and, and to the board. Um, it has been submitted for well over a month. So there was plenty of opportunity with this on the agenda to have responded at this point.
Thank you, Karen, uh, I appreciated that. Um.
Chairman?
Yes.
I have, I have a question. Um, I understand in a previous privatization case, the board decided to put, um. I, I don't know what the correct word here is, I don't want to say guardrails, I don't want to say covenants either, it sounds a little too official, but. Uh, essentially a follow-up, right? Um, and in this case, my concern would be given, um. The statements made by representative of the union that. At this point in time, this janitorial staff is not being laid off. Um, however, once we decide as a board to privatize a sector of business. Um, I believe as I understand the statutes as written. The, the university or whomever, whatever state agency doesn't actually have to come back to us again. Um, the privatization is a first-time privatization and so. That's my hesitancy in a first-time privatization is, okay, you haven't laid them off prior and you're stating that there's no intention now, but. Within the next six months or a year, are these employees going to be laid off in favor of? Privatization, that doesn't need to come through this, this scrutiny again, and so what kind of? Follow-up might we have, um, there or even within our purview to have follow-up? I, I, I just.
Okay.
There is, there is a policy implication here.
So let, let me, let me, let me share. Um, let me sort of step back with this for the committee and, 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 and for the. Union, obviously, anyone, and employer, anyone else on the phone. Um, how, what I think our lane is. And, 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 and what I think our process is. There's no, first of all, the union and, and, and there's no dispute in this case. That this, and, and, and it was laid out in John's opening, that, that this, this, um. These, these services have been previously privatized. Now, and, 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 and so there's no dispute about the fact that. Um, initially, based upon what our statute says, the university was under no obligation to, to come to the board. Uh, and, 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 and put in a, a cost benefit analysis and business case for privatization. Because it had been partially privatized in the past. Uh, and, and that's been stipulated. Uh, the statute also says that, that the, that a interested party, in this case, the union. Can petition the board. In those cases where there has been prior privatization. And, and ask the board to take a look at it. And, and I know that the employer disputes what some of our authority is under those situations, but. I, I want to share for the record what I think our authority is. I, I, I think that, that, that. If, when the union petitions us, the, first of all, this committee, our committee actually only makes recommendations. Some committees of the board actually make decisions, the contested cases committee actually makes decisions, they don't come to the, they don't come to the board. Uh, except for information. But the privatization committee is a working committee by statute that makes recommendations to the board. We could have recommended to the board, we shouldn't accept the union's petition. Uh, we, and, and in which case the board would get to vote on that. Uh, and, and whatever we decide here, the board will vote on. Uh, because that's, that's, that's the way the statute's drawn. If, I, I want to take a stark example. Let's, let's suppose, and that's, it's not this case, Karen's quite right, at this point. Based upon even all the work that John, that we've done and we've done a lot of good work with OPM and the controller. To get to a place where we say, look, this is what the normal costs are. That should be in these templates. And, and, and while there may be some future fine tuning. Those normal, those normal costs that we've agreed to between the controller and OPM that will be published. Are much closer to a reflection. Uh, of, of the ongoing cost than in the past. I recognize you could shave some things one way or the other potentially. But, but for our purposes here, I'm very comfortable. That the new costs that we have that are going to get issued, the ones that are in the current analysis. Are the ones that we should be looking at. Uh, and if there are further refinements in the future based upon what really is. A legacy cost or, or a, 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 a normal cost, we'll do those as, as we go along. It's complicated in part because retiree healthcare is complicated. And to what extent are we, are, are we having ongoing normal costs that reflect the true cost? Uh, it, I'm not sure anyone can give us a full answer yet. But those are the costs we're using. But suppose we had had a case where something had been previously privatized. So that there wasn't initial cost benefit analysis, it wasn't required. But the union or petitioned us and said, hey, wait a minute. We don't think this is right, we took, the, the board took up the petition. And suppose upon investigation, we found that the cost of contracting out was more expensive. Than keeping it in-house. That's not this case, but suppose we had that case. Now, by the way, the employer might still argue, we know it's more expensive, but there are quality reasons. There are other reasons why we still think we should do this. Uh, and that's certainly something that has to be considered because cost isn't the only factor, the union's saying that now. Cost shouldn't be the only factor, we should look at the impact on, 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 on different populations and so forth. But, but if we had a case that came before us. Which, where, where, where the cost of contracting and out was more expensive than the current cost. I would say that it's in the board's authority to say to that agency. Bring it back in-house. I, I, I'm saying this in part for the university to consider, because I know you don't agree with that. I, I, I think that the, the initial question of whether you had to do a cost benefit analysis on the front end. We, we all agree. But in terms of the board's authority, I, I read our statute to say. That we, even on those cases where there's been privatization in the past. The reason why we can take up a case or someone can petition is to see whether as we go into the future. Does the decision that we made back then still make sense? It's also important to note. That this is not defined by statute as a core governmental function. And, 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 and that matters because if it is a core governmental function. Then I read the statute to say, there's a presumption. That we should keep this in-house. And, 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 and. And, 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 and if the, and, and there's a higher bar to privatize something if in fact it's a core governmental function in terms of the board's vote. It's a two-thirds vote in terms of a majority vote. There's also a question as, is the savings less than 10% or is it more than 10%? I think that we've established finally, we didn't know this until this latest round, that the savings are more than 10%. There, 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 I think the, the figures that John has is 20%. The university initially thought 26. That's down from what was an earlier version. But there, it's indisputable that it's above the 10% threshold. Now, by the way, even if it was less than 10%, there still might be reasons why the, the agency wants to privatize something. But there's more of a burden, I think, if it's less than 10% to, 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 to justify it. In terms of the union's view that this move has a, a, a a, a negative impact not only on these workers, but on these communities and, 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 and I know, and I know the union knows that, that there was proposed legislation in the last round of the legislature to actually make that one of the factors that the contracting standards board should consider. And that legis, and, and, and by the way, the board went on record to support that amendment. That legislation did not pass. And, and, and so one of the things that I'm really clear about that while we ask agencies to, to follow the law and, 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 and that we, we have to make sure that we follow the law ourselves. And, 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 and so I am, I want to say I'm hard pressed to see how the board, based upon the facts that we have before us, I think we have to recommend that, that, that the, that the university, the agency was within its rights to do what it did. I, 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 I'd like to give the union the opportunity to respond, but I, I also wanted the union to understand in part because I'm, I'm on my way out the door. What I think, what I think, where the, where I think the facts lead us right now. And, 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 and the arguments, the argument that I'm, I'm glad the union puts it on the record because I think the union's right. We're lowering, does the state as a public institution want to be lowering the standard of living of, of, of working people in our state by its privatization efforts? But that's not a factor that this board can actually look at right now, under the law, in my opinion. And, and, and so, and I recognize that the, the employer may disagree with the idea that I think we have the authority. If, 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 if this, we have the authority to, 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 to say if we thought that there had been a violation of the statute to reverse it. But I actually don't think at the, at the, based upon that, the facts that we now have that, that there, that there has been. And, and, and so I just want to put that out there. I know Brenda, you've had your hand up and Al, and then I see Kara's hand as well. Brenda?
Yeah, well, I agree with you, Larry. I guess I'm just trying to go back to your comment about what's our lane, you know? I mean, what is our role in all of this? And, you know, I do appreciate the fact that we talk about standards and giving employees quality of life, but the same holds true for people in the private sector as well. I think that, you know, we have the facts in front of us. Our requirements under 4E16 are to look at the facts and it seems pretty clear to me that there are savings. And we can argue that, you know, the amount of savings in the whole scheme of things isn't a lot, but I do agree with Yukon and Karen in that there's been continuous attempts and should be continuous attempts to save as much as we possibly can. I am ready to support this moving forward. I do understand the union wants to come back and put something on record. I don't know if that, you know, just delays, I'm, I'm not saying they shouldn't, don't get me wrong, but I'm, I'm just trying to determine it. Maybe that's the struggle you have with. You know, it seems that the facts are in front of us right now. They make sense. The savings is there. And this is within our purview and strictly within the requirements of what we're supposed to look at. I guess to your point about looking at these other outside factors, that's not within 4E16. Maybe it will be eventually, but it's not right now. So I don't know. I think it's something that I would fully support moving forward.
Al, El.
I don't, I don't agree. Because I don't have confidence in the numbers. And until that's done, I'm not going to vote for, for doing that, what you're suppo, what, what you're supporting. I, I, I've been in this business a long time and I, I still can't understand why fringe benefits have not been defined. And until that's done, I can't vote for this. Whatever this is, I think you're, you're proposing that we, that we follow, follow the lead of, of, of Yukon. I'm not ready to do that. And I, I, I say, you know, I've, I've done a lot of fringe benefits analysis. This, this one makes no sense. And if you've got the wrong numbers for the fringe benefits, the level that they're at, it changes everything. And until that's, and I look to our, Al Bertolini and his group that were trying to get the answer to this. And I can't believe that the state of Connecticut hasn't taken care of this already.
Well, Al.
So I, I, I'm just not ready to, to agree. Anything, I think I need more information until we decide this because these numbers are so different that I, I have to, I want to know what the, what the reason is. And the reason is not just the fact that, you know, that they're paying, paying less or whatever they're. I, I think it has to do with the, with the rest of the, you know, of, of the, of the fringe benefits.
Al, I mean, this is what I have confidence in. Number one, in terms of the, the work that we did, that John led, John Longman led with, with both the Controller's Office and OPM to separate out legacy cost on fringes from normal cost, which the statute requires. He, he really did breakthrough work on that, 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 that. And we have, I'd say we've got 98%. There's some fine tuning that might be done. But there's agreement on most of it for the first time in the board's history. That, that work has, has been done and I'm, and, and we've stripped out. I'm confident that, that, that the fringe number on the state side that we're looking at now is, 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 is really quite good. It's, and, and, and that's not a number, by the way, Yukon doesn't like that number. But that's, Yukon wasn't involved with that. That, that was negotiations and discussion between our board and, and, and between John and, and, and the controllers. On the university side, I'm comfortable, I mean, the university has said to us that they don't actually have a fringe breakout. But they do have a total number for what they're paying for the contract. They're not, there's not another additional number that they're paying. They've given us what it is that they have to, the, the cost of this contractor, wages and fringes. It hasn't been broken out. For our purposes, on the contractor's side, it doesn't have to be broken out. It, as far as I'm concerned, what we have to know is what is the cost of labor and fringes together that we're going to pay the contractor? I, I have confidence that the number that Yukon's given us is an accurate number. If, 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 I mean, unless someone's committing fraud, they wouldn't give us an inaccurate number. I mean, that, 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 so, so I, I have, so I have confidence on that side of it. I, 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 I think that, I mean, when these, when the union first notified us, the fringe number, the first time, the first communication we got from the union, the fringe number they were saying they were given was over 100% on fringes. And then they said, well, I think there was a time when it was 60%. And, 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 and and, and I'm not sure Yukon loves this 20% number. Because I don't know the way their, 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 their their block granting works. But, 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 but it's the number in our statute. And so it's the number that they've used. They've used the number that we've reached agreement with. We've reached agreement with the controller and OPM that this is the number that should be used. And OPM, when it puts out the cost benefit analysis template, they're going to put those numbers into it. So, so I think on, on the costs, yeah, I mean, we could drill down and say, tell us about what is the 401 plan that the contractor has, but it's not, it's not really relevant to, 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 to our discussion. What's relevant is what is the bottom line cost that the university has to pay for labor and fringes to this contractor? I think we have an act, I, we could, we could extend it. I don't think we're going to have any new information on that. We have all the information we're going to have on that.
I don't think there's, I don't think the issue is fraud. I'm not, I'm not saying there's fraud. I, what I'm saying is that I don't think, maybe the state doesn't understand what it, what it has. And I think that we've got to take a look at those, at those fringe costs and do it by outside people that do this all the time. But I, you know, I, I just don't, these numbers are too high.
Well, I, okay, all right.
Well, that goes to the root of, I mean, we're never going to, we're never going to get that done for this, right? I mean, that to me, what Al I think is saying is he's got a problem and I understand what you're saying. You know, he has a problem with the OPM comptroller discussions and coming up with this amount. And yet we're not going to resolve that with this. Am I right? Am I?
And I just have to be really honest. The person that we've been working with that's been really helpful at the Controller's Office, we just found out this morning that she's moving to a new job in private sector. So it, it's going to take me a couple of months to get back up to speed with the replacement. And then if we're going to continue the negotiations, it's going to take us a while. Carolyn has been really pivotal in helping us get the clarity we needed to be able to build the rate changes that we did. It's going to take us a while to get that, that new person in here and then talk about all the things that we worked with Carolyn. And then if we want further refinement, all, I guess all I'm saying is it's going to take, it's not going to be overnight. And I, I can't even promise you within 30 days. I don't know when Carolyn's leaving.
Jonathan, I'm not, I'm not asking you to do this. We have a group that's looking at this and they can't seem to get the answer from the state.
But our role is looking at.
And the group and Bruce, Bruce Boff, they've all tried to find out and they haven't been able to.
I'm sorry, but isn't our role looking at what's in front of us right now? So even though we may dispute or, or Al may think that there, there's got to be a way to get this group to continue looking at these fringe costs, we have to base our decision with what's in front of us right now. Am I right?
And if you use those numbers, you could go through one, one part of the, the state government to another.
Well.
I mean, you, you, you know, you end up privatizing everything if you've got the wrong number.
By the way, I, I just, Al and Bruce are not looking at that. That's not, to my knowledge, and as the chair, I think I know what they're doing. We task, we task John and, and Bob Rinker to do, to do that because they were the ones that were most knowledgeable about it. And, and I, I think that the, the agreement that we've reached, we reported it out, I think, two board meetings ago is really significant. I think we, we are in a much better place on it than, than, than we've ever been before. And, and I do think it's a long-term project, which would require, I think, getting some outside help to really understand what the normal cost of retiree healthcare is. Because I don't actually think that anybody knows. And, 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 and because healthcare costs keep spiraling. And, and so, but, but, but we can't hold up agencies' ability to make decisions about what they're doing. Well, and, 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 and a 30-day extension, we're not going to, we won't know any more about that in 30 days than we know now. I, I think we have to be able to use the numbers that we helped to get OPM and the controller to for the purposes of the case that's before us. And, and, and certainly an agency that has to operate needs to have some clarity about, look, what am I, what do you want me to, what do you want me to fill in on this line? And, 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 and and what, and, and I agree that it, it, it can maybe be refined and will be refined. By the way, I'm not sure as we refine it, that it'll be lower. It might be higher. And, 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 and because, you know, but, but that's what it is right now. Kara, you had a question?
Actually, a lot of what, I, I was more of a statement and you kind of covered a lot of it. I just wanted to reiterate and, you know, I, I thank the board for taking a look at this for the last year. Partly because, as you noted, when we started this process and this complaint, we had been told by the university that they were using 108% fringe rate. We have come a long way to evaluate those costs and to give our members a fair assessment as to the cost they really have to the system and, you know, in comparison to truly try to make this apples to apples. So I think that work alone was worth this petition despite the aggravation I'm sure it has caused. You know, that being said, we simply just asked for a, a time period to respond because despite Yukon's assertion that we've had 30 days to, you know, respond, this has been pending for a year. We have been waiting months for this latest response. And we just now have the final numbers available for this final comparison to issue a final response on the record to the board. So I, I just want to again say, you know, we really appreciate the efforts of the board because we have come a long way in a year in evaluating these fringe rates, which makes a huge difference to a contract, especially a contract that supplies custodial services and state service. So that's just what I wanted to, to just leave on, you know, for everyone.
Okay. Um, thank you. Any other?
How can you have a, yeah, how can you have a, a, a fringe rate of 108% unless I don't understand?
Well, it turns out that's.
108% of what?
Yeah, I mean.
Is that 108% of the, of the pay?
The salary typically, right? That's typically how you do it.
108% of the salary is fringe benefit?
Could be.
That's part of what, that's part of what, that's part of what motivated the petition. But, but, but that's not what's in the cost benefit, that's not what's in this cost benefit analysis now. What's in it is 20% and a fraction. What's the fringe rate that was used? John?
It's, it's kind of complicated because it goes in a bunch of different sections, but it winds up to be about 13% and that goes into the employee benefits line. But we take out the, the retiree. So it, it, it kind of puts all. So it, it, it kind of puts all these things in, into one. And that, that makes up for things like, um, you know, 401K matching and administration of the 401K. There's a lot of things that feed into it, a couple of different lines, but then it sums, sums up to about 13% to go into there.
So we went, so, so John's work with OPM and comptroller went from a fringe rate that was, you know, some agencies where they, they were all very, very big numbers to now OPM will say the template requires that the, that it be somewhere in the neighborhood of 13%.
I, I think to, just to, I just want to correct that because like, we also have to include, at least in this sheet that we put in social security, Medicare, life insurance, medical and all the other things. So to, as a, as a big group, fringe right now is about 45% on top of a salary in this sheet. And that includes everything from social security, Medicare, life insurance, serves regular employees, unemployment compensation and a few other things. But yes, 45, we were, we were away, we were much more distant from that when we first started this, this effort.
So it's not 108?
No, 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 no. Part of why we took so long is because we needed to get to a rate that we had some confidence in. So I'm, I'm just trying to figure out procedurally. I want the union to have the opportunity to be able to put stuff on the record for, I, 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 based upon what the union has said to, said today, I'm not sure that the things that, there are reasons to put those things onto the record separate and apart from whether it would have an impact on the decision that we make in terms of, in terms of the cost. But, but, uh, do we need to do an extent, do we need to, do, do we need, how much time you, do you, Karen, do you think that the union needs to respond?
Can give you a response in two to three weeks, Larry.
Okay. Well, I, I guess I, and, and yeah, yes.
This is Karen Buffkin from the university. I would just like to, to register my objection to giving an extension to the, extending this case simply for them to put things on the record that have nothing to do with what you've indicated is your decision or your charge in this case today. So obviously you're, you know, the, the information that they want to put on the record you've indicated is not going to impact the board's decision. And so it would be for some future purpose that's not within the board's, or this committee's purview. And so for that reason, I'd like to register the university's objection.
I wonder whether there's a way, I see there's a John Hanlon that has a hand up.
No, that's me, Chairman Fox, yeah.
Ah, ah, that's your phone, got it.
This is, this is our meeting room.
Yeah, I, I didn't want you to think I was ignoring you. I mean, I, Karen, I mean, do you think that what you're going to put on the record is going to go to arguing the numbers?
At this point, I, I do not know. I'm waiting for those final numbers from John.
Yeah, and I can share it after this meeting. And that'll be, there's a, it's not a memo, it's a set of slides that break down how the rates all come together. And I'd probably have to explain how it goes from that to the spreadsheet. But I'd, I'd be glad to walk you through that. But it would, we'd have to have a conversation on how to take what I'll provide to you and transfer it over to the spreadsheet.
Okay.
Lauren?
Could I suggest that we give the union, uh, four weeks to state their case? Since they haven't had, they haven't had an opportunity apparently for the last year.
Lauren, do you have a view on this?
Um, I think that this is just a recommendation coming out of the committee. And while I would like to provide the union an opportunity to respond to the information here, it has been going for a year and our board meeting is Friday. I would hate to push this off another month. So I, I would not be in favor for an extension at this point.
Okay, then, um, here's what I want to recommend and that, 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 um, that we bring forward a recommendation to the full board this Friday for the board's consideration. That, that recommendation and, and that, 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 that recommendation note that, specifically that the union is going to have the opportunity to add to, officially to the record of this over the next four weeks. But that, that based upon what we have before us right now, our recommendation would be that the, that, that the agency has the ability to contract this work out. I, I think now, you know, it's a little bit messy. But, but it's, I'm not, yeah, Brenda.
So what are you saying? I mean, I don't, what are you saying? Like, we're giving them, are you saying we're going to recommend approval? But if the union comes back in four weeks, and what? Like, we're going to reopen this? Like, I don't
I don't think that the union is going to be addressing the cost issue. I think
Well, I know you don't.
Based upon what Kara said today.
Right, okay.
So, so, but if, if the union came back and said, for example, whoa, timeout, these numbers are way off, it's not what? I mean, I think that, I think that the, the, we'd, we'd say we'd look at that too. But otherwise, I guess what we're really saying is the agency, based upon, based upon the data and the analysis, the agency, we, 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 the petition, we've reviewed it and, 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 and that this privatization can go forward. And we're noting that we've given the union, the union wants to add to the record and we, and we expect that the union within the next three, three weeks will add to the record. We've made our, I mean, it's a little awkward, but I want to give the union the opportunity to add to the record and I want the board to make the decision. I want to do both. Can we do that? I don't think what the union's going to add, there, there's value. The union has a lot of reasons why it wants this to be part of the record. But, 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 but it doesn't sound to me like that that is going to be disputing qualitatively the numbers. It's going, it's probably going to talk about how this should be about more than just numbers. What I would say, but what I, the reason the board can make a decision now is that right now, I don't believe the board has the authority to, 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 to use as its criteria, um, the adverse impact that the union would like to see as part of our authority.
I guess I'm just trying to understand how you would walk me through that. So we say we recommend approval and it somehow gets approved on Friday. And then the union comes back and puts something on the record. Are we then revisiting this issue all over again? I know you don't think, I know you don't think they can show the numbers are different. I'm not comfortable with it kind of prolonging this. I do, I mean, I do get the point about the unions, you know, Karen wanting to put something on record. But again, I don't, you know, I guess I didn't follow enough of the fact that, you know, there's been time that this should have been done previously. It wasn't done previously. Okay, but I'm not sure what that means our next steps are because what I don't want to do is have this same discussion all over again that we've had today.
Yeah, unless, unless when the union came back, there really was an issue with all the numbers. I don't think, that's not what Kara's saying now. That's not what the union's saying now. They're saying that this ought to be about more than just numbers. I think that what the board would be having to decide on Friday, and we have this as part of our discussion, is that I don't believe the, the board has the authority under the statute right now to look at some of the criteria that the union would like us to look at. And we, and the board would have already decided that. But it's giving the union the opportunity to make that as part of the record.
Sure, and the union, but can't they just, I mean, no disrespect, but can't they just do that anyway? I mean, if we're faced with what's in front of us today and we're basing it on the information that, that's narrow or not, what's in front of us today would garner potentially approval that goes before the full board. That's what we're dealing with. That's what we're going in front of the board with. I have no objection to later, but to, you know, to sort of say, with, with the contingent that they're going to come back with more information, they can do that anyway. The union can do that anyway. Like, they can come back after the fact and, and put on record that they disagree with the decision and this is why. But I guess I'm just trying to understand setting a precedent by saying after a decision's made, we're then allowing them to come back on rec, do you know what I'm saying? Do you know what I'm getting at?
I do know what you're getting at. I, I just lost my video feed here. Did everyone lose theirs?
No, we're okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is Karen Buffkin from the university. With all due respect, I think Attorney O'Sullivan put on the record the union's position with what it thought should be considered. And I don't think it's appropriate to keep this decision open on, to supplement a record which presumably, unless the board doesn't take action on Friday, would be taking action.
Yeah, I mean,
Can I be, can I just say one thing? I, I don't, Greg, I think we finalized the agenda for Friday already. So trying to get all this information out to the board and have them make a decision by Friday, I think we're going to get a lot of pushback for that. I just wanted to add that comment. It, it took us a while to look at all this information. We have to go through it too. They'd want to go through it too.
This is on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
So given that this will not be available for vote on Friday, then I would make a motion to allow the union to prepare a response to review prior to our October board meeting, where it will be on the agenda then.
I second.
I'm sorry, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm having technical problems here. Say that. I have no, I lost my, I lost my, I'm hearing things, but I totally lost all the video. Teams went, so, so say that again. What's the motion?
So given that this will not be ready for our meeting on Friday, I would motion to allow the union to craft a response submitted prior to our October meeting so that this board, or this committee rather, can meet and discuss and formalize our recommendation to submit for the October board meeting to be voted upon that.
To clarify, I think this is on the meeting for Friday. We received the agenda this morning. This is on the, the, the Friday's agenda.
And I thought that's why we were meeting today. So this is a good recommendation.
Yeah.
I, I apologize. I might have made a mistake. I haven't seen the agenda. I just maybe made a poor assumption that it wasn't on there.
Okay, then, I, I apologize and I'm seeing my motion.
All right, um, yeah, look,
I mean, I guess I go back to say, I'm sorry, with all, you know,
No, go ahead.
I guess I go back to say, what we have in front of us garners a recommendation. And we will look at what we have in front of us and make a recommendation, notwithstanding concerns about fringes and OPM and comptroller, et cetera. And we make that recommendation and move forward and see what happens on Friday, which will be interesting. And then if it ends up being approved, I still go back to say that the union has every right and ability to come back and send another letter of disputing the recommendation.
To be part of the record, yeah.
I guess so, but I don't want to, and I'm, again, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but setting a precedent, you know.
Yeah, I think what you're saying is a cleaner way to do it.
Right.
Except if they've been waiting, have they been waiting a year to, to be heard? That's what I'm, I thought.
Well, I'm not sure I, yeah, so maybe, I don't know where that's from.
Well, look, I,
Oh, I thought that's what the union said.
No, I mean, it's been a long time, but it's, we, it's not as if nothing's been going on on this issue for a year. And a lot of, as Kara said, a lot has happened. But, but, but I think, I think, I think there's three members of the committee, I know, Al, you're reticent. But I think Lauren, Brenda and myself are, are prepared to say, to recommend to the board that, uh, this, that we go to the, with the recommendation that, that, um, the university, um, can, can proceed with this, uh, it's already done this contract. And that fundamentally, the petition is, is, uh, I don't know, John, I want to think about what the actual frame of the motion is.
I don't see why, I don't see what we're losing by waiting to the October.
I, 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 I think, I think what we're losing is that we know what the decision is. This is taking a long time and I don't want, I don't want our board to sit on the decision. I want, I, I, I'd like our board to have the reputation of we make decisions, whether they're easy or hard and we make them and we, and we're transparent about it and we go forward. And Brenda's right, the union can submit its opposition to the, it's, to the decision and, and it, and ask that it become part of the record. And I'm sure we'll make it part of the record. But we don't, but, 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 um, we should, we, if, if we have a, three members of the committee are ready to make a recommendation to the board based upon the facts that John has assembled. And I'd like us, uh, we said to the board, we wanted to try to get it done by this Friday's meeting and, and, and I'm moving that we make that, I think Brenda moved that we make that recommendation. I don't know, Lauren, whether you want a second and then we can just vote on it.
Second.
So just, just to be clear, so the, the motion is to make the recommendation to the board for a vote on Friday. I just want to make sure I got it right.
For a vote on Friday, we can't make a recommendation to approve or we just make a recommendation for a vote?
It's not, it's not approving the petition. It's, 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 our recommendation is that the university was within its authority to do this.
Okay, yep.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to add that it is not on the agenda for Friday?
I thought it was.
It's not listed there.
Is the privatization reporting on a Friday?
Yeah, just general reporting.
Yeah, okay, well, um, let's, let's, let's put it on the agenda and we'll give a full report. John will give a full report. If you can put some of that out in advance to board members, that would be good. And board, the board can always decide that they're not ready to vote.
I do need to go, so if we do intend to vote on this motion.
Yeah, I mean, do we have, I just want to have a formal vote of the committee. I'm an I.
I.
I'm an I.
Al?
Opposed.
Okay, so, so we'll report it out that way. And, and, uh, and we'll move forward on this on Friday.
Okay.
And for, for the board's consideration, the board, the board can, but, but we're coming at it with a recommendation that based upon our investigation and we'll do a full report. John, if there's some stuff you can put out in advance to the board and the public, that'd be fine.
I will. I'll, I'll send that information, um, right after this.
Okay, um, thank you, everybody, for, for, for participation in this and, and, um, we need a motion to adjourn.
I just had one thing. Uh, there was a question in the chat. It was from, uh, I believe it was Versi. And we had, uh, Greg and I spoke with Versi last week and her question was, they have a, they have a complaint about privatization of state police audits and training. Is this the correct meeting to raise this concern? At, at this time, that's, that's no, because this is a special meeting and the agenda is locked in. So the correct place to do that would, I think, be under other business tomorrow and we'll follow up with that. So the correct place to do that would, I think, be under other business tomorrow and we'll follow up with that.
On Friday.
On Friday.